May 27th, we're at about 5:15, we're in the Tom Baker Room of the City County Building. This will be the Board of City Commissioners' regular meeting, but first, we'll have Pastor Huenfelder. Huenfeld, please come forward and give us invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Prayer first?
Prayer's probably fine.
Lord, pray. Heavenly Father, I come to you this afternoon asking for your help in coming together to TruZAC, the important business of this city, I pray for our mayor and his staff, for each commissioner, for our police chief and each member of the Bismarck Police Force, for members of the Sheriff's Department and Corrections Officers and staff, for our fire chief and all the personnel who are members of the fire department, and for the various and often unseen city workers who work tirelessly, and for the medical staff in our hospitals, care centers, and health clinics, as well as ambulance personnel and first responders. As we gather this afternoon, I pray for wisdom in handling difficult challenges. I pray for protection from fiscal danger, for mental well-being, and facing overwhelming challenges that were unknown a few years ago, for financial assistance and blessings from your hand due to loss of jobs and income, and for peace of heart and mind in the loss of loved ones, family members, and friends during times of stress. Heavenly Father, remind us of our own weaknesses, but the promise of your help. If we only will call upon you, we will choose to live in calm assurance because you are the giver of every good gift. We thank you for your love and care and provisions shown in your Son, Jesus Christ. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting in order if we can call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Here.
Commissioner Zinker?
Here.
Commissioner Connolly?
Here.
Commissioner Cleary?
Here.
Mayor Schmitz?
Here. At this point in time, we have public comment. Public comment is for the items that are on the consent agenda or regular agenda item that are not a public hearing. So anyone who wish to speak, please come forward, state your name, and tell us which agenda item you're speaking to.
Mayor Schmitz and Commissioners, my name is Trent Wongan, and I wish to speak during the public comment on regular agenda item J. Consider the request from Commissioner Connolly to have a discussion about the extraterritorial area, ETA. I do live in the ETA, and I did not ask Commissioner Connolly to put this on the agenda, if anybody was curious. The ETA is an area that includes a few thousand rural residents and thousands of acres of rural property. I support Commissioner Connolly's proposal and ask you to support a special public input meeting with the City Commission and County Commission to discuss the ETA. This meeting would allow the public to have a voice on the current ETA and hopefully lead to a healthy discussion about the ETA between the city, county, and the residents of the ETA. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Sorry, one second.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Trent, do you have any specific concerns that you're hoping to see addressed?
Yes, there's numerous. I've lived out in the rural area my whole life, and the ETA came to me. So there's a lot of concerns that I have. I won't get into a whole laundry list. I'll use one example. Misty Waters, okay? Misty Waters should be a premier subdivision in Burley County. It's in an upheaval right now for what's going on there, okay? And to rectify the situation, the county residents don't have input. It does go to planning and zoning. Planning and zoning has representation from the ETA, but it can be appealed. Then it goes to the City Commission, where the rural residents have zero voice. They don't have a vote or anything like that. That is a prime example of where the city has control, but the rural residents that are affected have no voice, no vote in the matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Thank you for your consideration.
This is public comment. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Susan Dingell. I am a public transportation advocate. I have been attending Transportation Committee meetings, and I regularly attend Board... It's not coming through?
No.
Sorry. Yeah, we probably do. How's this? Is this better?
Better.
Okay. I regularly attend the Transportation Committee, the Bismarck Transit Board meetings, MPO, TAC meetings, City Commission, and others. Transportation is a big concern of mine as a lifelong pedestrian and also bus user. I am hoping that tonight you will vote to give money from the city tax revenues, the sales tax revenues, to Bismarck Transit to pay off this year's annual shortfall of money, which is somewhat misleadingly also called the deficit. This is an ongoing gap in support after federal, state, and local property tax monies are exhausted, but still more money is needed. And the reason this sales tax initiative was passed was to fill the gap. It needs to be filled without further messing around. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Trevor Vanette. I'm here on the transit issue as well. I'm in support of the expansion of the hours, and we've put a lot of time and effort on the steering committee. I would ask you to consider expediting the process so it gets through. Tell the board to start having special meetings, because I haven't heard of one opposition to expanding hours. We need this for a better community, and it's time to let our community have what they voted for. Thank you.
Again, this is public comment. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, tonight. I'm here to speak on the regular agenda, item J, the discussion surrounding the ETA. First of all, I want to say I appreciate Commissioner Connolly bringing this up, because Travis Jensen. I'm an ETA resident, live up by Misty Waters, been a resident up there for about 14 years. This is nothing new. The Commissions before you have failed to hear the people out. So I appreciate Commissioner Connolly bringing this up and even entertaining the idea of hearing people out. We are part of the Bismarck community, whether we pay taxes, whether, you know, we can or cannot elect you people. We are part of Bismarck. Many of us work in Bismarck, our kids attend school in Bismarck. We have just chosen to live on the rural outskirts of Bismarck. My biggest problem with the ETA is we are never heard. You know, I'm reading your guys' mission here, "to provide high-quality public services in partnership with our community to enhance our quality of life." Many of us in the ETA, I think, would probably say we have a little different quality of life, but we fall into your guys' rule. And like I said, even prior to this commission, prior to many of you, the issue has not been heard. So I agree with Trent. I think that between the county, the city, and the residents that this affects, it's time we sit down and have a discussion to see if we can find some sort of compromise, because it's been a long, ongoing issue, and I feel the ETA, why it was developed, is no longer being used for why it came about. I'm assuming many of you know why the ETA came about. You're familiar with that process, what brought it about. I live in an area that I don't feel that the city will ever annex in. Yet, I still have to follow your ordinances. I still have to follow your rulings, but yet I don't have a say on who's elected to this board or this commission. So I would support the conversation being had. And Commissioner Connolly, I appreciate you hearing the people who have had this concern for quite a while. Thank you.
Josie Milbratt, I fully support a joint public hearing between the Bismarck City Commission and the Burley County Commission. My reasoning is representation. I'm not going to echo it too much more than what they've already said, but if you can't elect the people that regulate you, that's unconstitutional, to be frank with you. So I fully support that meeting, so. Any questions?
Go ahead, Commissioner Risch.
Mr. Mayor, do you have some particular issues that you've had problems with, with the planning and zoning or things like that?
It really doesn't matter if I've had any issues at all. I don't get to elect any of you, but yet you regulate what people in the ETA do. I know we get two people on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but they're appointed by you, correct?
No.
They're not? Okay. So you get two people on the Planning and Zoning Commission.
There's actually four.
But the decisions for the most part are made here. This is where the buck stops, so that needs to change. I fully support that public hearing, so appreciate your consideration.
Commissioner Connolly.
Josie, when you say "representation," you're the chair of a district, right?
I am, yeah. I'm the chairman of the District Day Republican Party, so a lot of the ETAs encompassed in the District Day Republican Party, so I can echo a lot of people's...
So representation's pretty important.
Yes, it is. Hundred percent. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, Amanda Yellow with the Bismarck Event Center. I wanted to come up here and just say a few words about Agenda Item F, the Consider the Request to Receive the Bismarck Event Center Operating Models Report, from Dan Fenton with Jones, Ling, and LaSalle. I just have some comments that I put together, just something that I think we wanted to just have a voice at the table. There's been obviously a couple of meetings leading up to this point where we haven't had myself or any of our staff come up here and say anything, so just some thoughts to share for your consideration, for your decisions you're making tonight. I stand before you, not just as a proud member of this community, but as someone who has worked at the Event Center almost 12 years, and I want to be a voice for the Event Center. I believe deeply in the power of local ownership and the value of keeping our Event Center rooted in the hands of those who know it, love it, and live here. Our Event Center is more than just a building. It's where families have celebrated milestones, where small businesses have launched big dreams, where local businesses have worked hard to grow their event and expand over the years. It's where our local dance companies have seen thousands of dancers grace the stage at the Bell Mahews. It's where we've had some events in our building since we first opened in 1969, and others that just made their initial call to get booking details and look forward to being in the building for the first time. The Event Center is a cornerstone of Bismarck's identity for over 50 years, and the Bell Mahews for over 111 years, and they deserve to be stewarded by those who understand its heartbeat, and that's us. The building was originally called the Bismarck Civic Center. It pains me to say that, being the marketing person, but I still can stomach saying those words. But it's a place where the community can utilize the space, as it's home to help foster their ideas and build their dreams. We have since changed our name so we can be more accurately described when we are contending for conferences, conventions, et cetera. Now there's the talk of bringing in a third-party management company. On paper, it might sound efficient, but the truth is, when we hand over control to an outside entity, we lose more than just decision-making power. We risk losing our character, our culture, and our community-driven focus. A third-party management company won't know our local artists, our small business vendors, or this local citizen that needs the location to host their annual fundraiser. They won't prioritize some of our longstanding events over higher-paying out-of-town bookings. They'll prioritize profit margins over personal connections. We are in exciting times at the Event Center, and we have a large seating renovation about ready to kick off in less than one month, where we'll be adding in additional seats to the arena, along with a better sound system and a better riser system that helps us to save on staff setup and teardown. We also have started renovations at the Bell, where we're installing new carpet and replacing the railing system. And also, in the last two months, we've had seven ticketed announcements covering all types of genres and demographics, and we've had three additional announcements that are coming up in the next few weeks. And these are all events that are taking place in the fall and summer of 2025. There are a combination of Bell and arena events that will definitely be economic impact drivers to our community, and our staff has been working on some of these events for months for them to come to fruition. As far as support currently for the Event Center, we work with Venue Coalition and Arena Network to provide us with a wide range of management support services that help to empower independent venues. We work with this company to help provide us with operational best practices, national booking representation, and advocacy. Access to a network of other arenas, stadiums, theaters, and convention centers to hear of industry trends and attend weekly calls, with other venues to hear of event group buying opportunities. This company has helped us with making introductions and strategic partnerships with promoters and content providers. There are also additional supplemental support services that can be supported by this company for additional costs. If a third-party management company has chosen as the path forward, we will no longer be able to work with this company, because they do not work with venues that are owned by third-party management companies. So is third-party management really the answer to the question that was posted back in November when we started this whole process? I'm not here to say that third-party management isn't a good solution for some venues, because it is, but I just don't feel it is the right answer here right now. We're all looking for different ways to operate the Event Center and the pros and cons of each option. There were additional options that were presented from JLL after the meeting, and I feel there's a good hybrid option being presented from those ideas. The idea of the City Commission nominating individuals to be on a Bismarck Event Center Authority Board would give another connection from the Event Center to the community to take part in being more connected with the public on events coming to the Event Center, potential events coming to the Event Center, and giving input on what else makes sense for our community. Under this model, the city retains control, and there is no governance model introduced that allows for local ownership. Local ownership ensures that every decision, every event, every renovation, every dollar spent is guided by people who have a stake in our success. People who walk these streets, who cheer at our parades, who care about what happens here tomorrow, because they'll still be here tomorrow. And let's not forget the economic ripple effect. Keeping management local means jobs stay here, revenue stays here, and more importantly, control stays here. Local ownership allows us to reinvest in our own people, our own businesses, and our own future. The question that keeps coming to mind is, what can our staff not deliver on that a third-party management could offer you? You need to give our employees a chance to take the items identified from JLL and run with it. The groundwork has been laid, the to-do list has been formed. Now let us move forward with the additional tools in our toolkit. We've already proven that we can move forward in a time of uncertainty and try to handle business as usual, so let's not continue this for another nine to 12 months with putting together an RFP and waiting for RFPs to come back, potentially hiring third-party, when maybe an economic impact study or something might be better suited for this time. Let's start the course of hiring a new director, put the Authority Board in place, and let the people you have in place at the Event Center deliver for you on the items from the report. When we are fully staffed, we are 25 full-time employees combining for a total of over 100 years of service and around 100-plus part-time employees. Let's not lose this tenure in our building. As a Bismarck citizen noted in her comments in the City Commission in April 2024, "Attending to staff morale and setting the course forward is a largely unaddressed issue so far, but it is neither trivial nor disposable." I would have to say this is something that I feel is still not being considered as it should. Let's not forget that we have been working through these uncertain times since September of 2023. Let's not continue this roller coaster of uncertainty, and let's not prolong this process even longer. We are not just preserving a venue, we're preserving our voice, our values, and our vision for what the Event Center can continue to be, a space that reflects us, serves us, and grows with us. We all agree that operations cannot stay the same because we are not fully staffed, and we need to be able to hire some key positions again. We know that better than anyone else, because when you work in the event industry, you must constantly be adapting to change and making pivots all day long, every single day. Let's not outsource our identity. Let's keep our Event Center in local hands where it belongs. Reform is responsibility. Is the risk you are potentially willing to make worth the reward? We at the Event Center do not fear failure as we are moving forward, but we are terrified of regret. Giving up on what you have is the birth of regret. Thanks for your time.
Anything, Commissioners? Thank you, Amanda. This is public comment. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward.
I appreciate you guys, Mayor Schmitz and Commission, for allowing the public hearing. This is also in relation to Item F on the agenda with the Civic Center. And my recommendation, get rid of this liability, get it off the city books, take the risk, turn it over to a third party to increase the flow of events and reduce the liability off the city, and let's get the doors swinging. We all know...
Sir, can you state your name?
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Farren Kastner. And I live out in northeast Burley County. We all know that any business, if the doors aren't swinging, there's no money coming in. There's not even a chance for money to come in. How long have we been arguing? How many meetings? I ask myself, how many meetings have I watched continuous discussion? And I appreciate the gal that came up, the representative for the Event Center, to voice her concern. And I respect her fully on the comments that she read, but this Event Center, we need to do something different. What we've been doing unfortunately hasn't been working. Why? I hear continuous discussion. We can't come up with a solution that we feel is reasonable and makes sense. So maybe the risk is trying something different and getting a third party that's involved with Fargo, Grand Forks, Jamestown, so we can get into that loop and maybe get some of those concerts, have them come through, if we can book them right, get them on a Friday night, or maybe an early Saturday, whatever, or try and get somebody that's en route to the casinos. I mean, how are they holding all these venues? And they have a much smaller facility than we do right here in the city of Bismarck. I don't know how they're doing it, but I think we can do it, but the way the city's been working with it hasn't been working. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Again, this is public comment. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Cody Igoe. I'm an ETA resident for the past 11 or so years. And the ETA's been something that the last three administrations, or whatever you guys want to call yourselves mayors, I've talked to all of them. They've all said it's been something that's on their radar. They want to address it, and yet nothing has happened of it. I guess I'm in full support of having a meeting and hopefully getting down to something that'll open up some lanes of communication between the county, the city. I live in southwest Bismarck. I'd have to say that my neighborhood, pretty filled out. I don't foresee any more development happening down there. So as far as jumping through all the flaming hoops to do anything with my property that the city wants me to do, I just, I think it's a little excessive. I'd like to see some of that go back to county control. I've got, you know, horses on both sides of me. I've got barns. I've got everything down there. It's not like I'm living in the Cathedral District or in the middle of town. I guess that's all I got to say, is I'd like to see it open up and hopefully have some more open communication, some support from the county, and not just answering to a planning and zoning and City Commission that we have no recourse to go after for a big old rubber stamp "no" on anything we want to do with our property. So with that, that's all I've got. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is public comment. Anyone who wish to speak?
My name is Parker Kildee. I'm a Bismarck ETA resident, and I am in full support of hearing the item for reassessing how the ETA is represented.
Thank you. Public comment is open still. Anyone who wish to speak, please come forward.
Mayor and Commissioners, first off, I want to thank Mike for bringing this to the table here, and we can get the ball rolling with the county and the city and the residents. I live in rural Berry County.
Can you state your name?
Marv Abraham.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Just wanted it on the record.
At one point in time, I was in the ETA of the city, but then it got pulled back. And at some point in time, I'll be back in it, I'm sure. I'm on 93rd Street, East and South Lincoln. But I fully support, you know, a joint meeting with the residents, the county, and the city. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is this mic system in this building really sucks. I've been coming to the county commission meetings for a long time. One time, I got told to turn up my hearing aid, because I complained, because I can't hear. Now this gentleman turns up the volume. I don't know, is that volume control all these mics? Okay, well, maybe it's been a secret and nobody's known about it, because the county commission has never known about it, and I'm not the only one. There've been several people sat back there and, hey, speak up, we can't hear you. Our state's attorney sits over here, and she's about this far from her mic, and she pulls it this far, but we still can't hear her because she's soft-spoken. So I don't know who's in charge of this mic system, if there's a better way of doing it so we can hear. We come to support you guys at these meetings, but we're wasting our time if we can't hear what's going on.
Well, we try to make sure people can be heard.
Well, and the same with you. I've sat back there in the back, and I can barely hear you sometimes, too, so you guys need to get closer to your mics then. Maybe we need collar mics or something. I don't know, but I've complained about...
I've been a resident of the ETA for approximately 20 years. And I, prior to that, I lived in the City of Bismarck, and I chose to move out of the City of Bismarck, and now I'm finding myself kind of dragged back into the middle of the City of Bismarck, which I understand growth happens, but I think we need to basically reiterate what everybody else has said in regards to having a voice. We fall under the city zoning and planning if we want to do anything on our property outside of the building of our home. If we want to put up a secondary building, we got to go through city zoning and planning to get that approved. But I've got no representation in terms of voting for you guys. I agree with what the other gentleman said. I think we need to have a voice. I think if you guys are going to make decisions based on what we can do on our property, then we should have a voice and having a vote. So I would encourage the Commissioners to get together with you folks and with us to figure out how we're going to figure this out, let's quit kicking the can down the road.
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
My name is Eric Kilzer.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm in full support of whatever we need to do to get the ball rolling, so thank you.
Public comment period is still open. Anyone who wishes to speak?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm also here to vote in favor, or speak in favor of getting more representation for the county in the ETA. I've been an ETA resident for 20 years. I also lived in Bismarck for a lot of years. I moved out to the county because I want the county experience, I want to live out in the country, I don't want to be bound by the city rules. I understand building codes, it's got to be built properly, I understand all that, but we have no voice. Perfect example is the intersection on Highway 10 heading out towards Lincoln. Who decided to take away that second lane going up the hill? Now you're stuck behind a car or semi that's doing 30 miles an hour all the way to the roundabout. There's no passing all the way to the roundabout. We never had a voice in that. That was decided by the city. It's, I'm sorry, but it's asinine, it's a dumb idea. There's no traffic flow, and we've got more and more housing going out there, and we have no say. So I'm in favor of getting more voice to the county.
Can you state your name, sir?
Sorry, Don Faber, F-A-B-E-R. Thank you for the chance to speak.
Thank you. Again, public comment period is open. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. A second call for public comment?
Do I need to write my name again?
No.
Okay. Farron Kastner, live in Burley County. Eric Kilzer was actually the one that came, he called me and asked me, you know, hey, are you familiar with this ETA thing? Here's what's going on, can I come over and visit with you? And he's the one that's told me that Commissioner Connelly stepped up to the plate, initiated, must have been through conversation. I'm in support of it. You know, how long are we going to waste time on it? The other thing is, I know how the Burley County Commission works. Are they all going to show up and have a legitimate taxpayer-public discussion? That's the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if I may add, I forgot to discuss when I was discussing the Event Center, may I also talk about that or not?
Sure.
Okay. The last meeting with the discussion of this high-rise motel, small business, little boutiques in the main floor, going, is it straight across from the Event Center where that strip mall used to be?
No.
Okay.
And that's a maybe.
Okay. Yeah, okay. My suggestion would be, and I think I emailed you, Commissioner Zinkler, and anyway, why not put it kitty-corner, straight east of Houhot, and maintain and have as close a parking to the Event Center as you can, and increase the amount of handicap-accessible spots?
I don't want to get yelled at by Marv. So I do, I remember that email. I don't have the portfolio anymore.
Oh, okay.
So I took that email, and I forwarded it to Amanda, the intern director, and to the mayor. So, yeah, I just, once we, if it's not our portfolio, we typically don't respond back to that, and then that's what I did with that.
Okay.
So I did get that email. Marv, did you hear that?
Yeah, I heard that.
All right.
Okay, so my other question is, why would you take a parking lot right next in the Event Center that's in, I thought, pretty good shape and disturb it? When you have that parking lot, kitty-corner, that's in rough shape, it's a snow pile parking lot, as well as on the south side of the fence, I'm assuming that the city uses some of that, as well as Kirkwood Mall might use some of it, it's kind of a dumping ground, I think it's kind of a dirt lot, whatever, storage. But use that parking area instead of going in there and spending taxpayer money on refurbishing, rebuilding versus disturbing a nice parking lot that's right there, and we all know that handicap parking is limited, that we can enable the handicap close accessibility to become involved with the Event Center. That's my suggestion. Or the other thing, if you're, whoever's adamant on putting it across the street and doing some type of a skywalk to access the parking lot to get into the Event Center in the unfortunate climate control that we have in North Dakota, right? So I mean, and I never, I don't recall ever seeing one of those proposals when, on the previous meeting discussion, about maybe a skywalk or an underpass, under something, okay, for these handicap people.
Sure. All things are being considered.
Right, no, I understand.
It's a blank page at the moment.
Yep, you know what? My recommendation, I would keep that a blank page, because I don't think that we need it. Why would we take away revenue from the motels? Yeah, I understand. Okay, thanks for your time.
Mayor, Commissioners, I'm sort of on both sides of the ETA issue. I own a house off of Richmond in town.
Just for the record, state your name.
Robert Field.
Thank you.
And I own 16 acres in the ETA. And the things about the ETA that we don't care for is the only time we see a Bismarck cop is if they get lost and they're chasing somebody. And then I see them at 2:00 in the morning in my yard. We get deputies in our area, but we also get Lincoln cops pulling people over in the ETA. Bismarck and Lincoln do not have legal authority in the ETA. But you guys want to be in charge and manage that area, but yet you don't manage it. You just want to bully anybody that wants to build something. I can have a horse, and I can have fish, but I can't have a steer on 16 acres. Which one, you know, who at the city come up with that plan? What's the difference between horse shit and cow shit? Same thing. But I can't have a steer supposedly. We're supposed to only have a certain number of chickens. Do you know how big a 16-acre piece of ground is? It's ridiculous. So I don't think anybody in the city really has any business going past the hard city limit, because we get, we don't get garbage from you guys, we don't get anything from So it's kind of ridiculous that those of us living out there have to be controlled by people we don't vote for, that we can't vote for. None of us can run for mayor, none of us can run for city council, but yet you guys control us. And I agree that it's unconstitutional. One of these days, somebody's going to sue everybody individually and waste some money, because I guarantee you, that can't be constitutional. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Public comment period is open. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward. Third and final call for public comment?
I just wanted to add something about how you guys take care of the ETA. You know, I stood at the Planning and Zoning Commission here a few months ago. My neighbor wanted to put a greenhouse up, so I was talking about how we displaced water. And I think Gabe can maybe chime in, because he specifically said that there was no water runoff study done down by my house. But yet you guys, you know, and I brought it up prior to the building going on in my area, because I was the only house out there for many, many years. And the ditch, I mean, we're literally right off the river. The ditch runs like this. Wouldn't you think water would be engineered to run towards the river? So when we get a heavy rain, the west part of my yard has a lake in it. You guys, if you want control of the ETA, you guys have to manage it. You can't just treat us like the redheaded stepchild, because again, now how do you fix my ditch? If we wanted to fix the ditch, how would we fix the ditch when we have 12 approaches now in our way? Commissioner Zinkler, I know you know some construction knowledge, you know, wouldn't that have been a lot easier to do before we started building houses and putting approaches in? You know, during the flood, I've been down during the flood, I see my city commissioners, I didn't see anybody from the city out there seeing how we were doing. You guys were more worried about bringing the county folks into the county and using our only resource out of the ETA. So if you want it, then own it. If not, find a compromise and let us go. Like I said, I think Gabe, I can pull up the date if you want, but Gabe specifically said there was no wastewater runoff study done down there.
Third and final call for public comment? Hearing and seeing no further public comment, public comment period is now closed. Thank you, everyone. Commissioners, before we get to the consent agenda, I am requesting to pull Item D2 related to liquor license ordinance language cleanup, there's still some work to be done on that. Beyond that, is there any other, what are the wishes of the Commission on consent agenda?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Moving to regular agenda, Item 3A, public hearing on a request for a new Class I-2 complimentary alcohol license for All-Star Nails and Spa on East LaSalle. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this, please come forward. A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Seeing and nor hearing anyone, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item 3B, public hearing on a request for a new Class I-2 complimentary alcohol license for Stay Gold Studio LLC at 413 East Broadway Avenue. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to it, please come forward. A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Seeing and nor hearing anyone, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item 3B, public hearing on a request for a new Class I-2 complimentary alcohol license for Stay Gold Studio LLC at 413 East Broadway Avenue. Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to it, please come forward. A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I'll move approve as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Moving to Item 3C, public hearing on Ordinance 6619, a zoning map amendment from R-10 residential to conditional RT. And I'll let Ben, you can describe the rest of the lengthy description.
Sure, Mayor. Yep, thanks for the introduction. The zoning map amendment the mayor referenced is proposing to convert a portion of the proposal from an R-10 residential to conditional RT residential on lots 25 through 40, excuse me, 34 Block 1, Bowden addition, as well as revisions to various conditions of the entire conditional zoning district identified in Ordinance 6619 in your packets. And coupled with this is a future land use plan amendment of a portion of an area from urban neighborhood to urban mixed, excuse me, urban mixed, or neighborhood mixed use. Property is located in north Bismarck, adjacent to the east side of Washington Street and south of LaSalle Drive. The project area is comprised of 9.2 acres and 33 lots in one block. Future land use associated with the proposal is a combination of neighborhood mixed use and urban neighborhood and existing zoning is a combination of R-10 residential and RT residential zoning districts. Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this request on March 26th and April 23rd of this year. A variety of members of the public provided both oral and written testimony in support and in opposition of the project. I'll just summarize sort of both viewpoints succinctly as I can here, but concerns for the, those opposed to the project generally included the following: increased faster-moving traffic in the area, changing area designation from homes to commercial uses, light pollution, impact on property values in the area, and a belief that other commercial areas exist in the community for this type of development purpose. Comments in favor generally included the following, that the proposal is of high-quality design, there'll be additional landscape enhancements, and that traffic is comparable to allowable uses today. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the zoning map amendment from the R-10 residential to conditional RT with the conditions of the entire residential district, excuse me, let me start over. The Commission did recommend a zoning map amendment from the R-10 residential to conditional RT on lots 25 through 34 Block 1, Bowden addition, and revisions to conditions of the entire conditional zoning district identified in Ordinance 6619 in your packets, and that a future land use plan amendment of a portion of the area from urban neighborhood to urban mixed use was also approved. Are there any questions that any of you have related to this item?
Commissioners, any questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak to this item, please come forward. A second call for public comment? A third and final call for public comment? Hearing and seeing no public comment, public comment period is closed on that item.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Risch?
Yes.
Commissioner Zinkler?
Yes.
Commissioner Connelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Item 3D, public hearing on Ordinance 6621, a zoning map amendment that would add temporary fireworks sales as administered special use to an existing conditional MA industrial zoning district. Ben? Ben.
Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the, the project the, the mayor just, uh, just described is located uh, in North Bismarck, east of US Highway 83 between North Star Drive and 71st Avenue Northeast. Uh, one second, the slides aren't advancing. Alrighty, I think, I think it's working now. Uh, so the property in question is located in North Bismarck, east of US Highway 83, uh, between North Star Drive and 71st Avenue Northeast. Uh, the project area is comprised of 33.5 acres and 13 lots in one block. Future land use associated with the area is a combination of community mixed use and industrial flex and the existing zoning is a conditional MA industrial. The Planning and Zoning Commission did consider this request on April 23rd of this year. Both oral and written testimony, uh, were provided in both support and opposition of the proposal. Uh, I'll just try to summarize again the comments in firstly, in opposition. Uh, there were concerns related to potentially additional firework debris, uh, in the area, potential for grass fire and potential for increased traffic to the area. Comments for essentially addressed, uh, the, the, the points, uh, made in opposition, uh, to, to the proposal. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, uh, of the zoning map amendment that would allow temporary fireworks sales as a administrative special use to the conditional MA industrial zoning district for blocks one, two, and three of North Star Commercial Park as outlined in ordinance 6621 in your packets. Uh, is there any questions that you have?
Commissioners? Doesn't look like. This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this topic, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioners Anker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next item three E. Public hearing to release the drainage easement on lot 42 block one, Misty Waters subdivision. Go ahead, Lauren.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Jeffrey and Robin Carlson are requesting the release of the 20 foot drainage easement on lot 42 block one, Misty Waters. The project area is located northwest of Bismarck, west of Burnt Creek Loop, north of Dream Circle on the west side of Dream Drive. The original easement was granted with the plot of Misty Waters, which was recorded on September 27th, 2005. By city policy, release of an easements other than franchise utility easements requires a public hearing with the city commission. Owners of adjacent properties have been notified of this public hearing. Staff have not received any formal public comments regarding this request. As a result of all findings contained in the staff reports, city of Bismarck staff find that the release of the drainage easement as described in the attached resolution would not adversely impact the public health, safety, and general welfare and is consistent with the comprehensive plan, Bismarck Code of Ordinances, and relevant state law. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the release of the drainage easement on lot 42 block one, Misty Waters. Do you have any questions for me?
Commissioners, any questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone who wish to speak to this, please come forward. A second call for public comment. A third and final call for public comment. Hearing nor seeing anyone, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioners Anker?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Next, item three F. Consider request to receive the Bismarck Event Center operating models report from Dan Fenton of JLL. Go ahead, Jason.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, the consultants for the next item are double booked this evening and I've been texting with Dan, um, letting him know where we are on the agenda. I think they could use a little bit more time. If I could ask you to pull the next two items up, and I believe both of them are part of city engineering's report. And then that should give enough time for Dan and Mitch to join the discussion.
Okay, we can do that.
Thank you.
So we'll hold off on F. Move to G. Consider request, receive bids and award contract for highway construction project 178.
Mayor and Commissioners, it looks like we're having some technical trouble with the agenda. And now it's working? Maybe hit refresh, Commissioner Rish? The attachments weren't showing up.
Mine was working too.
Sorry about that.
Hopefully it sinks up here. Wonderful.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, first item I have for you today is the award for highway construction project number 178. We opened bids this morning on this project, uh, which would put some pavement markings on some of our collector and arterial roads uh, yet this summer. We had one bidder on this project and our recommendation is to award to Traffic Safety Services Incorporated, uh, who submitted a bid of $239,526.85. I take any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call roll.
Commissioner Cleary?
Yes.
Commissioner Rish?
Yes.
Commissioners Anker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Mayor Schmitz?
Yes. Go to item H. Consider request to approve installing water and sanitary sewer along Vermont Avenue by special assessment. Go ahead, Dan.
Mayor and Commissioners, uh, this, what I have in front of you is a map showing Vermont Avenue. I should say the subject property of 2810 Vermont Avenue. This is an unimproved area of Vermont Avenue that just hatched and shaded in that green color. Per the development agreement that this board approved, uh, would have been a couple of years ago now, in 2022, uh, we allowed the owner of the 813 Burlington Drive property to install or to, to construct their building, uh, but not install water sewer or the street, uh, as would our typical development policies would require. And instead, uh, agreed via petition to delay that construction until such time that a, a neighbor to the north or the east uh, submitted a petition to construct that infrastructure. Uh, we're now to the point that, uh, we believe that the owner of the lot, uh, to the north is interested in doing this. We're still working through that process. But in our conversations with the owner to the north of 2810 Vermont Avenue, uh, we have indicated that the city commission would allow, uh, a special assessment for the, uh, outlaying of the water and sewer, because they previously, uh, entered into an agreement with the property owner to the south to do the same thing. So before we, uh, bring back to you a petition or, uh, creating a district, we want to just make sure that that assumption's okay and kind of, uh, get some blessing that this is an approach that we can go down. We've had locations in dissimilar ownerships such as this that we have allowed special assessment as the method to put water and sewer in, uh, in areas where we have unified ownership where the landowner, the developer owns both sides of the street. We, our development cost policy requires them to install that water and sewer, uh, without the use of special assessment. So this is a little bit unique in that sense, uh, but we did, uh, allow the neighbor to the south to use special assessments as a, uh, cost method of financing that improvement. So I guess, would take any questions that you may have or if there's any more other further explanation of what we're, we're asking. Unless it all be conditioned, uh, if the owner to the north actually submits a petition and then we'd have, uh, processes and steps to create districts, but before we started that process, just wanted to check in on that assumption.
Questions, Commissioners?
I guess I would, I would, I think all we would really need is some consensus that this sounds like an okay path to go down and obviously any details will get ironed out at such time that we create that district is kind of what we're looking for right now.
Good Commissioners with Commissioner Connolly? You've got your consensus.
That works for me. Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. We'll go back to item F. Consider request to receive the Bismarck Event Center operating models report from Dan Fenton of JLL. Dan, hopefully.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Absolutely here to answer any questions.
Dan?
Yeah, yeah, you can hear me. I can certainly do kind of an overview of what you have in front of you. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can. Go ahead and do an overview, please.
Okay, so if you. Right, okay. So if you see, um, the, uh, essentially the overview of the deck here. Trying to find me at least one, but long story short, you'll see that what we have first detailed in the deck is an overview of some of the key components of an authority board. And we've tried to put a decent amount of detail plus a sense of the type of responsibility that would be important for, uh, the board to have so that it can, you know, function well and be effective for the commission. And so if you look at that first sort of section, you'll see recommendations on a number of board members, potential areas that the board members would come from just to ensure that, you know, it's had the right sort of expertise on the board. Uh, the notion of the board certainly being a fiduciary board, therefore having really that responsibility to truly oversee and, uh, take on a more strategic role than what you might traditionally call an advisory board. And, uh, so there's a whole series of details on that. Won't necessarily go through every single one of those, but hopefully that gives the commission a sense of, you know, how a board, like we talked about last meeting, might be structured. Um, there's, obviously opportunity to continue to refine this, but I think you'll see a pretty significant amount of sort of detail on functionality, term limits, and just a different sort of potential pieces related to how the board would function. Uh, so, Mr. Mayor, maybe I'll stop there, because that's one section. If there are any questions related to the layout that we did on what the both makeup and kind of responsibilities of an authority board would be, I'd happy to answer questions here.
Okay, I'm letting the Commissioners peruse. Any questions, Commissioners, on the concept of the authority board? Commissioners Anker?
Mayor, Commissioners, so I'll, I'll be honest, if that's all we were going to get was a little summary today, I'm a little disappointed. This wasn't included in our packet, so we could read it over prior to the meeting. I mean, if we're expecting us to make a decision tonight on this and then given us seven and a half minutes or three minutes to read this thing and make that decision, I don't find that feasible. So I, whose decision was it to not include this in the packet?
I think we didn't get it till today.
Well, then we should have pulled it from the agenda and moved it to the next meeting, because quite honestly, I'd like to, I'd like more time as to absorb and read the whole thing and then move on from there.
And I'm fine with that. I said, I didn't find out, it was, it hadn't arrived until sometime today. So we can certainly move to the next meeting. I'm fine with that. Okay. We'll table to whatever the next, I don't know, June 10th or something, whatever it is. Okay?
Great. Okay, we're happy to come back and go over it then. Great, thanks, everybody.
All right. Moving to I. Consider request, discuss recommendation from the Transportation Steering Committee and provide direction to staff.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners. On May 13th, the Transportation Steering Committee met and had a recommendation for this commission. That recommendation was to allocate up to $1.1 million spent to expand Bisman Transit service times by four hours for the six fixed routes and expand Sunday service to run to 6:00 PM and to open it up to the general public. So that was the same day we, uh, had a meeting, our previous meeting on May 13th. And we, you guys had approved, uh, Mrs. Dingell had made mention of that, that you had previously approved up to a million dollars to fund the deficit for the 2025 budget. This is a separate motion or recommendation from that committee.
Go ahead, Commissioners.
So Mayor Commissioners, Doug, just help me out. So it's separate, it's inclusive of the million dollars that we already?
This is a, this is a different, different motion. This is $1 million for the deficit and this is 1.1 million to expand the services of Bisman Transit.
So let me get, okay.
So it'd be 2.1 total.
2.1 million and we've only started collecting the, the money in April 1st?
That's correct.
Commissioner, to impart response that we know that's not all going out now. And I, Deidre's back here, she can speak to the ramp up of what it will take to even expand the services, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Uh, so any service expansion, um, recommendations that would come from the city commission would still need to go through a number of public hearings, public comments, um, to follow the Federal Transit Administration guidelines. Um, the Board of Directors would then vote and then I'd be back before the city commission, um, any, any service expansion. That being said, we obviously have a pretty substantial ramp up period, like the mayor indicated, um, for us to get staffed, um, to accommodate this. Um, having four extra, um, cat bus hours throughout the week is going to be about 10 extra drivers that we need for CDL. Um, paratrans is a little bit easier to come by, but training and, and public outreach and things like that likely would not happen, um, for several months. Um, that being said, we do understand that the money has not all been collected yet, so, um, we do have kind of some time to, to buy, or buy, have some time that we can continue to operate.
Commissioner Connolly, do you want to speak?
One of the questions I'd asked, because, um, citizens, I mean, they, um, everybody likes honesty with it. And when we went out and collected signatures, it's very, the measure's very specific, elderly, disabled, and people of low socioeconomic status. Those are the priorities of, just general, it doesn't have to be, but what percentage of the population do you provide services for fall into those categories? Because it's significant.
Yeah, the majority of the services that we provide are falling within those categories. Obviously, we do provide service to the general public on our cat bus, so it's very challenging to say, um, how that classification breaks out. Um, but for the paratransit service, I mean, that would be elderly and disabled would be 100% of those, those trips that we're providing.
And the cat buses, uh, they have special hydraulics and things to make it very accommodating to like people that are using wheelchairs, they can get level with the curvature. And it's a flag down service and people with challenges, um, such as that, that flag down service could be a lifesaver in some cases if a battery runs out on a chair or something like that, correct?
Yes, absolutely. So all of our vehicles are ADA accessible, um, they all have tie downs for, uh, mobility aids. Um, so absolutely, our system is, is set up to accommodate, you know, all, you know, walks of life.
And then one of the things to answer some of your question, Commissioners Anker, um, right now, the way the system's set up with the seven to seven service, people can get to work or they can get from work, but a lot of times they might not have a ride to or from depending on the part of the day. And that, that came up during the community conversation, it came up during our, um, subcommitting meetings a lot. And if we're truly providing a service to citizens that need that extra opportunity to advance in life, um, that's why the expanded hours did come up in the conversation. But like Deidre had mentioned, which I appreciate all the work that you do on this, is it's daunting in the fact that, um, transit can't keep up with like all the trucking companies, those type of things. So it does, um, take a little bit to get those drivers on board, but once they're staffed and, um, it would, I think it would benefit our city a great deal.
So I think what the. So I think what the Steering Committee, what the Steering Committee was trying to recommend is that we encourage the movement forward to begin to put the plan in place to establish the additional hours on the fixed route and on the paratransit on Sunday, knowing that we are not going to be immediately up and running, nor do we have the dollars immediately, but it's going to take some planning to accomplish that. And by the time that planning is done, then we should have revenue that is being collected and flowing through. In fact, I would guess within the next week to 10 days, we have our first collections arriving. But it's going to have to, you know, it's not going to go out all one lump sum. And so it was, that was the whole goal out of the Steering Committee was, hey, can we start giving some recommendations, how we can start to enhance the service, knowing it's going to take six months or more maybe even to get ramped up because it could require some equipment too.
Yes, that's correct. And one other thing to add is through that public hearing and public comment process, if the, there is a overwhelming opinion from the public to change what the recommendation is from the Steering Committee or to shift or anything like that, I would still need to come before you with all of that information saying, you know, the public felt that it was more important for us to start earlier and end service earlier or, or shift that accordingly, but that's just following the FTA regulations.
Commissioners Zinker?
So Mayor Commissioners and Deidre, you'd probably be able to answer this better than anybody. So what's the, what's the 1.1 million get us? Is that equipment or time? Because if that's the case, you probably don't need this a full 1.1, 1.1 to get us through the rest of this fiscal year, right? So maybe that's why the...
So the 1.1...
Little shock and awe, all of a sudden it's 2.1 in three weeks that we need, that you need money for here type thing?
Yeah, the 1.1 is the, the late, the cost of the service over time. So it's about one, that's about one year's worth of cost.
Okay, so then we, it's really got to go through the budget cycle. We might have to do something for the last quarter of this year, right? If it's six months, I mean, it's the fifth, so that's 11th. So for eight weeks of this year, we probably have to do something fiscally, but it wouldn't cost us 1.1 million for eight weeks?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's what I was just trying to. So really, you need this 1.1 for next fiscal year?
For future years and general operations.
Which we'll have some collections of for that sales tax. Okay.
Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
And I, and I believe the Steering Committee was like, let's get some momentum going for Bisman Transit in this case to get up and enrolling and, but Deidre's got to go through her own set of public hearings as well, so. Commissioner Conley, did I state that? Okay. Commissioner Rish?
But we won't, we'll have the money rolling and it started coming in last month and by the time they need it, we'll have the sales tax revenue to cover it.
Correct. We're probably, as Commissioner Zinker said, we probably will have to do a budget amendment towards the end of this year if we're up, scaled up and have the funds available to do that. What are your thoughts, Commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess I would be in agreeance that, I mean, we talked about this last week. It was like the whole point of the ballot measure and the, the 20% or, you know, 0.2 and the three is for public safety was, was to work on things like this, to get these programs more fully funded, but also better too. So, I mean, I think I'm in support of that as long as we're making sure that it makes sense fiscally, whether that's an amendment and then also just making sure obviously that we're following that ballot measure, that whatever we're spending still remains in that bubble of that percent is, that's allocated, which I think when we saw those numbers two weeks ago, we're still well under that, so.
That would be the projection.
If I'm remembering correctly.
That would be the projections, yes. We know we're not immediately spending because there's likely some capital needs coming. So, go ahead, Commissioner Conley.
I echo a little bit of what Commissioners Zinker says with it not being there. Does it absolutely have to be a motion today? Can it be a consensus?
I, I think we're okay with, we're okay with consensus. I just want to have, so that Deidre has some direction from us. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep. Next item J, consider request from Commissioner Conley to have discussion about the ETA or extraterritorial area. Commissioner, it's your agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners and everyone that came out. As I've become more and more engaged with our community the last decade, I've knocked on a lot of doors and talked to a lot of people. And I hold representation in high regard, whether a person votes for me, whether they don't vote for me, whether they can vote me or whether they can't vote for me. And in the top five conversations that come up repeatedly is the conversation about there's never been a really wholehearted conversation where people impacted by city decisions have been able to have a public input session. And there's a lot of things going on always with both county commission and at our table that you'd always like to hope and wait for an ideal timing and it's just, it just doesn't happen. So I just asked for it to be put on the agenda, the time is now, and the ask is to call a meeting with all five members of the county commission present, with all five members of the city commission present, because it is an agreement between both jurisdictions. We all have roles and then the citizens, whether they live in the city of Bismarck, whether they're in the ETA, everybody comes to our community. They pay, when they buy goods, they do support our city through our sales tax revenues and fees on some level, but there is some other nuances that come along with the ETA as far as what happens at annexation, how close to that border. There's some rules that are into play that I asked staff to share some of that information on and they would shortly. And it's just merely to, I don't know what the answers are. I don't know where the outcome is, but this is the ask is, let's represent the citizens in our area that support a lot of the things that we do, have an honest conversation. And the ideal thing was, is we grow to a better place. I think that happened when we talked about home occupations, which was a long process, but we got to a better answer, I believe. And this is just another opportunity to do that.
So did you want staff to give any information?
I, Jason, would you?
Mayor Commissioners, Friday afternoon, Commissioner Conley and I talked about this particular agenda item. The, the content in the cover memo came from an email from Commissioner Conley. As far as staff being prepared to give a presentation tonight, we're not ready. We don't, Monday was a holiday. There was no staff that was here. I wasn't going to ask them to work over a long weekend at the beginning of the summertime. The intent was to, my expectation was to have this conversation at the table and see where this board wanted to go with it. If there is additional information that is necessary from staff, we would have that available. I know in the last probably 12, 15 months, a very similar conversation was had at this table regarding the ETA. I believe at that time, Community Development Director Ben Aris provided information. I know Gabe Shell had provided information as well based on a long list of stormwater concerns that were brought up. Many of those predated stormwater regulations in the city or the county. Some of those go farther back than even in the early 1970s. So rather than dig all of that information out, go through an entire presentation again, I guess I would prefer to see what direction this, this commission would like to go before asking staff to prepare a bunch of information again, not necessarily sure what exactly was the intent of the discussion this evening. So, and if I misunderstood, I apologize, but I don't believe we've got any formal presentations ready to go this evening.
Go ahead, Commissioner Zinker.
Mayor Commissioners, so I'm just going to put some people on the spot and just ask a couple of questions just because they came up in discussion tonight, and I think those are fair question to ask. So Chief, I'll put you, I'll put you on the spot first. Since there was a comment made about city of Bismarck police in the ETA, what's the, do we have an MOU with the sheriff or anything? Because I mean, if you live in the city, you are in Burleigh County and you can be pulled over by a HP or a sheriff within the city. So what's the, what's, what's the working relationship you have with, which is good, but is there a memorandum of understanding between you and the Sheriff's Department and the ETA?
Well, not, just for Burleigh County.
Just for, right.
So it doesn't matter ETA or if they ask for our help, we'll go help them wherever they need us.
Okay, and you can make a traffic stop within the ETA? Do you patrol the ETA? You only go to the ETA when called upon?
So Mayor Commissioners, when we end up out of town, there's a couple of different ways it can happen. Fresh pursuit is one. So if somebody flees from us and we're, we need to stop them, we can chase them wherever we need to chase them to. We do have jurisdiction two miles outside of city limits, but we're not out there patrolling. We may end up out there for things. Generally, when we go out into the, leave the city limits and go out to the county, we let the county people know. Oftentimes, we, depending on the situation, we may want a deputy with us when we do that, so.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Gabe, you're next. So can you explain the, the same type of thing with the memorandum of understanding with, with Mr. Hall about stormwater and those types of things that, that we have between the working relationship with them?
Sure, Mayor Commissioners, Commissioners Zinker, as it pertains to stormwater management in particular, any plat or any proposed plat as it's working its way through the process is conditionally approved by both the City of Bismarck's Engineering Department as well as the Burleigh County Highway Department to make sure that both parties are okay with what the concept is. Fully understanding that in a rural ETA plat, that highway or that road is going to be Burleigh County Highway Departments for the foreseeable future until such time if the city annexed into, into that area. So it's a joint process and we work collaboratively in that regard. We'd say the same on, I'll maybe speak to Public Works and our, some of our roads and streets agreements, that some of these roadways are half annexed into the city and, or maybe it's just portions of them are annexed to the city on annual basis between the Burleigh County Highway Department and the Public Works Service Ops Department. They'll negotiate a kind of a maintenance agreement between those two areas so that no one party is taking on the entire brunt of maintenance responsibilities for snow clearing or patching or anything along those lines. So we have a good working relationship with the Burleigh County Highway Department to better serve all those, those citizens.
And then a follow-up question. I mean, if there's a responsibility of a study for that stormwater, does that, is that in conjunction with us in the county or do we lead that or does the county lead that? Could you explain that too, please, sir?
Sure, Mayor Commissioners, Commissioners Zinker, if it's a really large undertaking stormwater related, a lot of it is going to be driven by whoever that lead agency is. So if it's something that we're doing a stormwater analysis or a master plan because we envision this entire watershed someday becoming part of the city of Bismarck, those are our recommendations to act on because it's going to be our infrastructure in the future that we're really talking about and, and planning for. It might be a different study if it's a floodplain study that is more, more of the current situation and, and those things, it's, it's going to be between the Highway Department as well as the Burleigh County Water Resource District that might take the lead on, on those sorts of recommendations if that's not something that the city is actively participating in trying to get new infrastructure out into a certain area.
Thank you, sir. And unless somebody's got more questions for Gabe, but I got, Ben's the next guy on the, on the hit list.
As far as you're going, let's, let's have your questions asked.
I love momentum. Thanks, Ben. All right, Ben, so help me with my memory because you work with this a little bit more than I do, but from a, just from the code perspective, and I just want to talk about building code perspective right now, okay? If I remember correctly, the building codes in the county and the city are the same.
There may be subtle differences between city and county, but both adopt state code. To your question, one that I think might be different in ours is, is the egress window height and that is at, to help benefit firefighters from entering and exiting a home, for instance, if they need to get in the basement or in the basement and need to get out. I don't recall where Burleigh County's is at that point, but I would say there's maybe five or less areas where we differ from state code. I, I can't speak to where Burleigh County is at, but, but I think we are fairly close to state code with, with a handful, with a handful of exceptions.
It is, this one might be more for Brady, but I'll go to this difference here. So the gentleman who spoke about the animals, I mean, right, he's kind of correct, there's really no difference, but is, is the, is there a limitation? Explain the animal limitation within the ETA and would you know, I'm putting you on the spot, would you know what the, what the limitation would be in the county as well?
I, I can look it up. I, I don't know what it is in the county, but for rural residential, and I think we're talking about limitations in rural residential areas. So these are neighborhoods where things like horses and chickens, there, there's a limit. And, and to be honest, I think cattle aren't allowed in a rural residential neighborhood. Agricultural zoning districts in the ETA would of course be different. You are intended to pursue agricultural pursuits in those areas where livestock would be allowed to, to, to be raised.
So with that being said, that, and that's kind of my, my, one of my points is, I mean, you could have a, you could have a rural residential area that has the same kind of footprint that we have in the ETA, but might have the same characteristics of limitations for, for farm animals. And you got to check with Burleigh County.
Yep, I can look, I can try to look it up quick when, during a break if I, if I'm ever get back down, but.
So, okay, perfect. And then is, is Brady here? Because I want to ask him of flood prep.
I don't think he is, but I can try to attempt to address it.
So I just want to, because I got this call today and I was pretty certain last June when we had our meeting when we accepted the new FEMA map, that the free board between the city and the county was the same and it's two feet. Because I thought, I'm pretty sure I asked that question and I just want clarification on that.
To be honest, I don't, I don't recall if it's two feet. I, I think it is two feet within the county. I know the county does also regulate to the 500-year floodplain. We, we do not, so there are some differences in floodplain regulation between city and county.
I do think the free board was the same distance.
I thought we did, but I, I'm wrong 2% of the time, so. But yeah, that's all I got. Thanks, sir.
Commissioner Conley?
Sorry. I don't know which department to ask, but maybe it's you, Ben. Thanks for answering Commissioners Zinker's questions, but when a home is a, there's a number, 300 feet within the border of the county, then some state law and local ordinance applies to where if their septic system goes out, what's the next steps after that?
Yeah, and you might be referring to, Commissioner, you might be referring to state plumbing code where if you're a certain distance, and I think it's actually 200 feet from a, a, a city, you know, water main, that they're actually required, the city water and sewer main, that they're actually required to connect to cities sewer services. Is, is that where you were going?
And, go ahead.
I can expand on that too because it's in the state plumbing code, that if you're within that same distance of 200 feet, you got to tie to that municipal water. So that would, doesn't matter if you're in the city, the ETA, or in the middle of the county, if there's rural water within 200 feet of your building and your well goes out, by code, you're supposed to tie to that rural water. Now it's got to be enforced too, so.
Is there, there's fees that are being tabulated and once that happens, is there a special assessment that looks back on the entire time that that property was around? And can you explain that?
I might punt it to Gabe here, but I think where you're going is the holding special assessments in a, in a bands?
Yes.
Is that your question? So I think to explain this and Gabe's directly involved or more directly involved in the process than I, but essentially the concept is if an area is specially assessed for an improvement and let's say they would normally fall, the, the homes would normally fall or businesses would normally fall within the distance of a special assessment district, but happen to be unannounced. but happen to be unannexed in the county, those properties are held what's called in abeyance until they are annexed into, annexed into the city, and then basically charged that special assessment for, for the subject improvement.
So between state plumbing code and how we follow the state and local laws, that abeyance can turn out to be a pretty substantial charge against the property, because they were never assessed it before, but all of a sudden, they can be.
Yeah, and I'm not, I can't speak to the notification process or the protest process associated with that. Gabe might be able to answer that more effectively than, than I. Again, I'm not directly involved in it, but I don't know what the notification process is for that, so.
Well, that's one of the four bullet points that I brought up, is it's a little nuance that puts us all, whether it's the city or the county, in a little bit of a flux, is, is that I'd heard discussions from other commissioners during the time to where they talk about taxation without representation. Well, people are being taxed, they're just not made to pay it at the time until they're annexed in. But for the entire time that they were in the county, that fee applies. And so is it one of the reasons to have this discussion? Can we get to a point where people are only charged for those services going forward, rather than all the time that they were in the county going back? Or if that's not possible, that's where, do they deserve the right to vote? And just opening that up for discussion and seeing what that looks like.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that. What I, what I can answer is that either party, or both, Burley or City of Bismarck can amend the, the agreement at any point. It's blatantly stated in the agreement that if any party wants to renegotiate, they can do that. They just have to provide notification to the other party. And both parties have to agree to whatever that, that change is. Also, either party can terminate the existing agreement. So it's, it's not a requirement that we have an ETA agreement. Actually, it's, it's probably, I would say, maybe more unique that we have an agreement compared to our peers than, than, than not. State century code would essentially give communities the size of Bismarck, Fargo, Grand Forks, Minot, a four-mile extraterritorial area that would essentially, there's mechanisms in place that would allow that extraterritorial area to expand proportionally to annex boundaries. So every time a city annexes, that four-mile ETA moves outward. With the agreement that we have in place, the boundary really doesn't move outward or inward unless the parties involved in that agreement agree to that. And there's terms of the agreement too, you might be speaking of different terms associated with the agreement. I, I, I am skeptical, or I, I wouldn't speak to the, to the representation part of, of elected leadership, but other pieces to it, I, I suspect we, we could investigate.
Well, I really thank you for that comment. That's one of the best dialogues I've ever heard you say, so I appreciate that. And you jumped ahead of the, by saying I wouldn't speak to elected leadership, that's, so I'll, I'll turn that back to us, is what's the harm in getting all 10 of us in the room to have such discussions in the public view? When we're representing people, there's a lot of different opinions. We're in to represent. I mean, that's my request. What's the harm in it?
I just got a question. Ben, so we're allowed four miles, but we're only out about two and a half miles?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Commissioner Rish. I neglected to state the other half of that, that point. So right now, we would be allowed four miles, with the first two miles being the exclusive jurisdiction of the City of Bismarck, two miles out to the four mile being a joint jurisdiction between city and county. That would roughly equate to about 120 square, square miles that, if we were given the, or operating rather, under the, the four-mile ETA. Right now, the negotiated boundary is roughly half that. It's about 64 square miles that, that we have. The benefit, there's benefit, there's pluses and minuses to having a negotiated boundary. The benefit, potentially, what we've heard from the development community is with the negotiated boundary, there's only one jurisdiction involved. So they, the developers don't have to go before City of Bismarck and Burley County for consideration of, of approval. So the timeframe is expedited, and you know, maybe there's less, you know, risk, depending on, you know, what the issue is that, that is, is proposed. The, sort of the con or the negative of that, at least from a city's perspective, is that the boundary is static until we, we, we all agree to, to change it, so.
Commissioner Rish.
Just to follow up with Commissioner Connolly's question, has Burley County requested this meeting? Anybody at Burley County Commissioners?
So I can speak that our joint committee between the two actually discussed this topic last summer. And both planning and zoning departments, and the four of us that were at the table, two from the city, two from the county, agreed that for this year, that the boundaries were appropriate, but that we would revisit it. I don't remember what we said, every year or every other year?
It's every two years, Mayor, thank you, and, and roughly October-ish is when. So it's not just the City of Bismarck and Burley County that have agreements. It's Bismarck, Burley County, City of Lincoln, Notton Township, Missouri Township, and Apple Creek Township. So there's five different entities that the city has agreements with. And to the mayor's comment, in 2023, I think we got all of those parties together. And at least from a staff or a representative from the township's perspective, it, there's enough area to grow into in this current ETA that there wasn't identified from at least a staff level perspective to, to change the boundary, so.
So, go ahead, Commissioner Connolly.
The one thing about the Bismarck-Burley meeting is it's usually Friday afternoon, and it's before 5:00.
Well, it's before 5:00, but it's, yes.
It moves around a little bit here and there, and that, and that's really difficult for a lot of people in public. So like it said, there's staff, there's township members, and there's people from boards, but it's not publicly. It's also not the main meeting, so it's not what people are thinking about. So when we're trying to improve communication and trying to make ourselves available to the public, that the subcommittees get a little bit more challenging, especially when they get further outside of, say, our commission meetings or our planning and zoning, because it's a lot to keep up with. I've been watching them all for a long time. It's a lot to keep up with. And sometimes decisions, people don't find out about them until after they're made. And then you're waiting another whole year before that opportunity comes again, and people get busy and off the radar. So this would be to bring awareness to it, get it out in the open. It's obviously by the attendance, it's something that people want to discuss, so. And I'll rest with that.
Commissioner Cleary.
I guess, I, it's not like I am opposed by any means to sitting at the table, all 10 of us. We did it two years ago for public health, when something needed to be discussed with the Joint Powers Agreement. Do I think that we're going to somehow come up with a magical solution that pleases everybody by getting all 10 of us in the room? No. I, I guess, looking at these bullet points, I think you're going to get a city and a county perspective, and it's, it's going to be different. And it all comes down to how we want to approach growth, but then also who we represent. The bullet point one, discussing allowing citizens to vote if the ETA continues. I mean, it didn't seem like, voting was mentioned in public comment, but it was mentioned in the sense that, in my opinion, if you're voting in a city election, you should also be paying city property taxes. The ci, the citizens of the City of Bismarck are who the five of us serve. I understand that the ETA is a confusing beast of a thing, but at the end of the day, like, there has to, we have to find that balance. So if all 10 of us sitting in a room gets us there, great. I just, like, to me, the, eliminating the ETA is a struggle with development. Having them all vote and bringing them all into the city, it's like a giant annexation. I don't know, even know how that would work. So I mean, is there somewhere in between? Potentially, I guess. I don't know.
Commissioner Connolly.
I'll, thank you, Commissioner Cleary, and I'll address that in a second. I apologize, Commissioner Rish, I didn't answer your question. The conversation has been had several times with both county and city. When they talked about kicking the can down the road, when the previous mayor ran for office, he promised that that discussion would be had, and it wasn't. To where everybody had that. Bismarck-Burley meeting, which is new, is the closest that it was. It's members from each. At the same times, it's not always all of the members. And there's finger pointing that happens between commissions, to where one points at the other, there's backtalk, and we've all been around to hear it, to where it's that way. By getting all 10 people in the room, I used to, my educational background is counseling. When you get a lot of that finger pointing, get everybody in the room to talk, and it takes away a lot of those challenges. And in that regard, pretty confident that if we called for this meeting, the other five commissioners from the county would also join us in that meeting. I mean, because in that regard, although those people do vote for them. And as far as what you referenced, Commissioner Cleary, we have kids that don't pay property tax, but we represent them, and they're within city limits with their parents. And granted, the parents pay property tax. We have a lot of new Americans in the community that aren't citizens yet, and we still represent them within the community. There's a lot of people to where the segue between where do you draw the line of representation and where you don't, it gets a little, you end up drawing those lines for ourselves. And in this case, potentially, every single one of those people could come into this. And we have another topic. We want regional buy-in into those discussions. We want to grow in a positive way. Well, having discussions to where we're bringing people to the table and welcoming them, that's how we get to that answer. And because it impacts every single one of us, whether they pay property taxes or not. Because we want those people to also partake in some of those big decisions that impact the whole region.
What are the wishes?
Has this even been sent over to the county to, is like, is it something that, because I mean, to Commissioner Connolly's point, like, it, it, it's something that he's bringing up because something, people speaking to him, it's not something the county has asked, has communicated with him about. So I guess I just, I mean, I don't.
I can't answer that. I mean, I just know that we have it in our joint meeting. It has, the ETA agreement has been discussed. And I, if it was 2023, then it was, then it would be up, and it's due to be reviewed now. You know, I, my only concern is, is putting 10 of us in the room. I'm not sure what we get done, for sure.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, Commissioner Cleary, Cleary, I appreciate that. As we're all adjusting to what people are saying, what I would say, I would like to make a motion to request that the county commission join us in a public hearing, or a public input meeting with citizens, both in the ETA and locally, to discuss this issue, to see if there's a better way of going about things on contingency that the county commission has a majority vote to join us on that matter. Would that answer your question?
Sure.
So we have a motion. So I'm going to second the motion for purposes of discussion. So we have a first and a second. We have a motion to request, I guess it would be a request to have a meeting, because they could deny it, as long as there's three present, so they have a quorum. What, what's the discussion? Commissioner Connolly.
I would say when it's majority vote, that their request is that all five of them attend too. If I need to amend.
I think you said quorum, but.
Well, a vote, when, if three of them vote, it's kind of like they're speaking for their entire board.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not really clear. You're saying you have to have a majority. That's only three. Would that be correct? Am I clear? You say the county has to have a majority, that would be three board members, three county commissioners?
I appreciate that question, Commissioner Rish. I was trying to answer Commissioner Cleary's question. The anticipation is, is that all five county commissioners attend, but it would be based on their vote. If it's three are against, then it's all null and void. I mean, it falls back onto their plate. But if they vote three to two for the meeting, then, and that's why I said, can we amend the motion? Or if I need to, I can, that all five have to attend. Us five attend, those five attend.
Mr. Mayor, what if somebody doesn't show?
I guess they run for election too.
So the, the ask is to like put it on their agenda and have them vote on holding a meeting? And as long as that passes at their meeting, we're still asking, obviously, that all of them attend. Like, if they vote no on having the meeting, we're still asking them to attend, is basically what you're saying.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if that's what the motion said or not, but.
Would you like me to withdraw and restate it? Take a second swing at it?
I, I think that would be good, yes.
Okay. I see Julie nodding. I withdraw my first motion.
And I'll withdraw the second.
I would like to make a motion that we have a meeting with, fully represented by both the Board of City Commissioners and the Board of County Commissioners, contingent on a majority vote of the county requesting that all of their members attend as well.
Okay, so we have a first.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. What is the discussion?
Hang on. Is that clear enough? Is it concise enough? Your motions are so vague, dude. Just say what you want to say.
I think, as long as, it's going to be on the record, so we can piece it together from the record.
Sure.
Okay. So what's the discussion? Any discussion?
I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I agree with you. I don't know, I don't know what consensus we come to at a meeting of all 10 of us, but I mean, I guess we, doesn't mean we can't ask them to have it, so.
We, we have a first and a second. No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Rish?
No.
Commissioner Zinker?
Yes.
Commissioner Connolly?
Yes.
Commissioner Cleary?
No.
Mayor Schmitz?
No, I don't know what we're going to gain. Do we have any other business tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, we had an excellent meeting today with the Backyard Chicken Group, and we're working on this ordinance. I call it a beautiful, maybe a perfect upcoming ordinance. It's going to be so great. I think Commissioner Zinker is going to be all over it, maybe make the motion to approve. So I just want to report that things are going well in that regard, but we've got some way, some ways to go.
Any other business?
I just, I can give a quick update too on, Jason was here, was up a few weeks ago, or two meetings.
I just, I can give a quick update too on, Jason was here, was up a few weeks ago, or two meetings ago, we talked about that we have a committee kind of working on 4th of July stuff, met again today for that. Things are going well, you're going to keep seeing it in the newspaper, and hopefully, we can keep putting it out from the city side to make sure that everybody understands where is it happening, that it's still happening, that sort of stuff. So everything's going good with that too, if you keep seeing it in the news.
Thank you. Anything else? We're adjourned.